Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Selaya?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge. Councilmember Woolridge is not with us this evening, but she will be joining us telephonically during our executive session. We do have a quorum.
And please send our condolences to Valerie for the death in her family. First session is a work session regarding the feat of the expenditure limitation on home rule option on the primary election held August 26, 2014. Charles, you're going to take it?
Mayor, council, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Farina, your finance director, and he has a short presentation discussion for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Farina. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're here to go over the state imposed expenditure limitation.
Don't tell me we've already started cutting back, can you?
There we go, yeah. As you know, on August 26, there was an election that is held every four years to ask voters to approve an alternative expenditure limitation, home rule option, and that election failed on August 26. So what does that mean to the town? What that means is the town will now be subject to the state imposed expenditure limitation for at least the next two years. We're not able to go for, do another home rule election for two years. So for the next two years, the town will be subject to the state imposed expenditure limitation. That's 2015-16 and 2016-17. What does that do to the town's budget? Well, the town's budget will be significantly lower than the current budget. It's reduced spending, but as I've stated in the past regarding home rule, it does not affect the revenues. The revenues remain intact and will still continue to collect the same amount of revenues that we have in the past. This, the expenditure limitation is just that, it limits the expenditures. So there's a few things that this work session, that I've planned for this work session. First of all, I want to provide a background on the state imposed expenditure limitation, how it came to be, also how the expenditure limitation is calculated, the budget impact, the estimated expenditure limitation, the estimated reduction in the town budget. And then there's, the town council approved an annexation and that was challenged. So the annexation does affect the calculations as far as the state imposed limitation, because population is a factor used to calculate the state limitation. And then lastly, options, current and future options that are available, and then staff recommendation. So first, the background. How did, how did the state expenditure limitation come to be, and then how is it calculated? In 1980, Arizona voters approved an amendment to the state constitution, and what it did is it created a system of expenditure limitation and reporting for all cities and towns, as well as counties and community college districts. So there, what that election did and put into the state constitution is a formula used to calculate the limitation, and it calculates the amount the expenditure level can grow from year to year based on population growth and inflation. It also set a base level of expenditures using this 1979-1980 level of expenditures, and 1978 is the base year for population. The population figure is provided by the state demographer, and the inflation factor is provided by the Arizona Department of Economic Research and Analysis. So those aren't numbers that we come up with internally. There are numbers that we must abide by, given to us by the state demographer in the Arizona Department of Revenue. And then using those figures, that we also receive the limitation amount from the Economic Estimates Commission. They notify us by April 1st. And then any annexations that have occurred within a jurisdiction, the population numbers are then calculated, and then we receive by July 1st the final number for the state limitation. Budget impact. First of all, the estimated town expenditure limitation, I'll show you what that is, the estimated reduction to the town budget. And then throughout this, this neck, this section here, there's going to be a comparison of the impact to the budget if there's no annexation, or the impact if there is an annexation. So the state imposed limitation is set by the state, by that formula. What it does is it significantly reduces the town's budget. The town cannot authorize or exceed expenditures above this amount, and if we do, there are hefty penalties that we would face. So for 2015-16, without annexation, the state limitation would be 17 million. And all the numbers that I'm talking about in here are estimates. Right now, these are based on last year's numbers that were given to us by the state demographer and the Economic Estimates Commission, but they are estimates. The only number that we had for a specific amount that was given to us by the Economic Estimates Commission was for 2014-15. So these are estimates based on projected population growth and inflation. So without annexation, the state imposed limitation for 15-16 will be 17 million, a little over 17 million, and then for 16-17, 18.1 million. With the annexation, that number increases by, the limitation increases by about $2.7 million, and will be 19.8 million. And then for 16-17, it increases about 2.8 million with the annexation to 20.9, almost $21 million. So just a little bit about the penalties, just for your information. If, if the amount that we exceed the limit, the state imposed limitation is less than 5%, the penalty is the amount that we exceed the limit. So if we exceeded it by, let's say, 500,000, then that would be the penalty amount if we're less than 5%. In, in our case, for the estimate for 2015-16, based on the projections and the estimates, it would be about 852,000. And that would be in excess of five, or at, just below 5%, exceeding the limit. If it's between 5 and 10%, the amount jumps to three times the excess amount, or up to the next year's state shared income tax. Well, our state shared income tax is estimated at about $3.3 million for the following year, 2016-17. And then if the amount is greater than 10%, if we exceed the limitation by greater than 10%, greater than or equal to 10%, it's five times the excess, or one-third of the next state share. So one-third of that number above is about 1.1 million. It's a little odd that if you exceed it by 10%, it is less than if you exceed between 5 and 10%, but that, you know, I verified those, that information with the state auditor, and that is in fact the case. So here's, here's how the state imposed expenditure limitation is calculated. And this is a, these are tables and charts that are given to us each year by the state auditor general for calculating, and it's what's used by the Economic Estimates Commission. So then you have the population factor computation. So for 2015-16, for example, our factor was 8.3055, and that's determined by taking the prior year population, or 26,370, which comes from the state demographer, and divide that by the population in 1978, and that's your factor. The same is done for 2016-17, and so on. And then from there, you calculate the state imposed expenditure limitation. So for 2015-16, our base limit in 1979-1980 was 714,000, a population factor again of 8.3055, an inflation factor of 2.8758, equals the projected state imposed expenditure limitation for 2015-16, or just over 17 million dollars. Same thing for 2016-17. And there you see how the number 18 million, 18.1 million, 18.2 million is determined for that fiscal year. Also, to the right of the projected state imposed limitation, estimated exclusions. Those are exclusions that are included in the state constitution, that numbers or expenditures that do not count towards the limitation. There's expenditures for natural or man-made disasters, subject to certain requirements regarding the declaration of the governor or town council, and then there may be a possible voter approval for that requirement. But more importantly, I think more, more likely, or as a part of our budget, the next section there is what we would have in terms of expenditures being excluded or exempt from the state limitation. For example, bond and law, using certain revenues for bonds and other long-term debt proceeds. The actual debt service itself is excluded, interest income is excluded, grants and donations, quasi-external inter-fund transactions, which would be, for example, the town general fund paying for water and sewer service to the enterprise fund, that's excluded. Voter-approved use of revenue for land, buildings, or improvements. And HERF funds in excess of what are, the amount of HERF money that was spent in 1979-80, or $64,000. So basically, all of our HERF revenue would be exempt, expenditure of the HERF revenue. And then unspent revenue from, from all of the above that is carried forward. So for example, any interest income that we have collected over the years that we have not spent, and of course, there'd be an accounting of that, but interest income that we have not spent can be carried forward to the next following years. Okay, now here's, here's some figures now regarding the state imposed expenditure limitation budget impact. And this is just a scenario. Right now, this, this is just for your information and your education on the state imposed and how it might affect the town budget. Again, these numbers are estimates, and the numbers that I'm going to use are based on the 2014-15 approved budget, and just using those as an example for looking at what the impact is of the 2015-16 budget as a scenario. So for example, without annexation and with annexation, the 2014-15 budget was about nine, a little over 19.1 million dollars. It's general fund money, utility expenditures, and any expenditures that are subject to the limit. Also included in the calculation is the new operating and recurring revenue for the project, the library, recreation, and aquatic center project, about an estimate of 794,000 in total. And then under the annexation column, there's also the new operating recurring expenditures based on the fiscal impact study that was done for the annexation of 619,000, is included in the expenditure limitation budget impact shown here. Then looking at the CIP that was adopted for 2015-16, 2016-17, or the five-year plan, capital or non-recurring, there's expenditures estimated about almost $8 million. What, that would also be subject to the limitation. Expenditures for capital outlay that are not included in there are, again, the HERF, expenditures that are funded by HERF. And then the town also budgets a contingency, and in this case, $2 million was used, because that's what we budgeted in 14-15. So the total, adding all those up for without annexation or with annexation, the total without annexation of expenditures that is subject to the limit is $29.9 million, and then including the annexation is 30.5 million. Again, just the operating recurring is based on the fiscal year 2014-15 budget, and then the capital non-recurring is based on the CIP. Okay, so I carried those numbers forward to this table where you see, again, see the expenditure subject to the limit, and then you see the state imposed limit, the 17 million, and then the 19.8 million for with annexation. And under the scenario without the annexation, annexation, you see a budget reduction of 12.8 million. With the annexation, the reduction becomes 10.6, again, because the, because the state imposed limitation increases about 2.7 million, and the expenditures based on the fiscal impact study of, with the annexation increases 619,000. So there's a budget reduction, favorable budget reduction when you include the annexation, or the population coming from the annexation of about 2.1 million. Again, expenditure's not subject to limit, HERF, HERF funding, about 3.1 million, or 3.5 million with the annexation. Debt service, so the town is currently paying with, a with alone, about 1.1 million. And then, of course, grants, whatever grants we decide to seek during a given year, those would all be exempt. So another, the reduction scenario, budget reduction. I'm carrying forward the numbers that we need to reduce the budget by, 12.8 million for the case without annex, without the annexation, or 10.7 million with the annexation. If you eliminated all of the capital or non-recurring, that would decrease that, or would be part of the reduction to the tune of about $8 million. Eliminate the contingency funding of 2 million, that still would leave a remaining reduction from operating and recurring of, under, without annexation, 2.8 million and 711,000 in the case of the annexation occurring. So what are our options? Immediate and future, and then staff recommendation. This thing does not want to change right away. Okay, so immediate options allowed under the state constitution is to hold an election, which would be on the third Tuesday in May, to ask voters to approve a specific amount above the state imposed expenditure limitation. We could also issue debt prior to the expenditure. Options to consider in the future, elections, asking the voters to approve the home rule option again for four years, but that wouldn't occur, be able to occur until 2016, for fiscal years 2017 through 20, or beginning with fiscal year 2017-18. We could also ask voters to approve a permanent base adjustment. And what that would do is our, our base that is used in the state limitation right now, is again, remember, is the 1979-1980 level of expenditures, which was only 714,000. We could ask voters to approve a permanent base adjustment, which would then increase that to where, what we've been operating at in the more recent years, and then that would become our new base limit for calculating our, a state imposed limitation going forward, instead of using that $714,000 number. And also, an election, asking voters to approve revenue used for acquiring and/or constructing land, buildings, or improvements. And that's commonly referred to as the capital projects accumulation fund. In other words, asking the voters to approve a use of revenue for specific, or for constructing land or acquiring land, constructing buildings, or improvements. Actions that may be taken this fiscal year, 2014-15, to minimize the impact of the 2015-16 budget, freezing certain open positions, which has already occurred. There's positions that are not being filled at this time. Do not start any capital projects that will not be complete by June 30, because any expenditures that carry over into the following year are subject to the expenditure limitation. Issue debt to complete projects. And then do not proceed with certain items that will add to the 2015-16 budget. So with that, that's the background, history, budget impacts. And then what staff is recommending is that we begin preparing for the mail, for a May election, asking voters to approve a specific amount over the state imposed limitation, as allowed by the state constitution. And then also, staff begin preparing three budgets for 2015-16, one with the state imposed expenditure limitation, one without annexation, without the annexation happening, and one with the annexation happening, because at this point, we don't know whether or not the annexation will occur. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like to ask Mike? Take any comments? Tara?
So in looking over at this, we're currently, without the annexations, we would need to cut approximately 2.8 million. With the annexations, we would need to cut approximately 711,000. However, this is not including any of the maintenance and operations for the new facilities that are being constructed.
Those numbers, all these numbers that I spoke about include that facility. And it's more than the 2.8 million. The 2.8 million and the 711,000 I referred to was operating and non-recurring, which would still need to be done even after eliminating the contingency fund of 2 million and capital projects of $8 million, of approximately 8 million.
So to be clear, because there are, you know, a lot of numbers on here, and after looking at them, that was one of the wording that actually was a little bit confusing, and I'm just going to pull it up, because when I read it, it says, "In summary, the town will have to reduce the 2015-16 budget by an estimated $12,834,700, with the annexations, $10,694,300. If the town eliminates all of the planned capital projects and non-recurring budget items, then the town would have, or leave an additional $2,851,800, or with the annexations, 711,400 in cuts coming from the operations budget items." But then it goes on to say further down that there's an additional on top of that, is that correct?
No, I'm not sure what you're referring to, but the numbers that you just read are correct. The budget reduction without annexation is 12.8 million. The, with the annexation, it's 10.7 million. And of that, there's about $8 million in capital projects, and then the remainder, because the $8 million doesn't get you to what needs to be reduced, so you would need an additional...
Right, no, I was, I was cutting all of the capital and non-recurring, that's how I got the 2.8 and the 711,000. But I was wondering if you had inserted, because I didn't see it anywhere, line itemmed, of operating the new aquatic center, water park, library...
It's included in the, on your screen now, you should see the impact where it says expenditures subject to limit, the 29.9 million.
Okay.
That number and the number to the right of it with annexation, 30.5 million, includes the operations for the new facility.
Okay. All right, that was the part that was not clear to me, because I was under, when I was reading it, the impression that you were using the numbers from the 2014, or 13-14 budget, which currently doesn't include that.
Right. I may not have stated it fully in the, in the memo, but it is on the PowerPoint now, and I, and it shows it, it shows it breaking out. Where you see the 794,300?
Yes.
That's the new facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, the revenue that we're going to get in during that time period of the home rule, what happens to that money?
That money stays in the town's funds, it stays in the bank account.
So if, once we ever pass the home rule again, then it's available to us?
Yes.
You talked about the permanent base adjustment, what would we need to increase that to?
That would, would be to be determined. I don't have an exact number, but I would imagine, and I don't, and I also haven't researched what's all included in finding out what the permanent base adjustment can be based on. However, I imagine it would be substantially higher and more in tune with what we've been budgeting late, as of the more recent fiscal years. But should the town decide to proceed, and I did not fully research that yet, because we cannot do it until 2016, but it is an option.
Don?
What, do you have an idea of what positions are currently have been frozen?
The town council approved a new position in IT department, a digital graphic media specialist, that's frozen. There's also a...
Mike, if I could, I think Charles got a list of it there.
The, Mayor, Councilmember Selaya, council, the current positions administratively that I have frozen is the assistant town attorney, the grants coordinator, coordinator, the graphics design, digital media specialist, engineering tech position, mechanic assistant, streets maintenance worker one, and a half-time street maintenance worker. Those are the positions that I have frozen at this point in time, that do not, and have not, and should not affect direct services. There are other positions that I'm allowed to move forward, I, I've been allowed departments to move forward with. Those happen to do a lot with the fire department and police, as far as dispatchers, and also a building inspector.
If we were to hold our election on the third Tuesday, what's the, the time amount that that would buy us? If, if we were to pass something that a one-year, or is that a two-year leeway?
That's a one-year option, and then we would have to do it again the following May for 2016-17.
Okay.
Well, I would think we'd probably freeze all hiring at this point. I don't care what department it is. You know, I can't believe we're going ahead and hiring more people at this point, when we don't even know where we're at.
Councilmember Hawkins, Mayor Council, it is highly recommended that I don't freeze dispatchers for the police department or the fire department. That will create a, a severe issue for the residents, not being able to dispatch police or fire to homes. Those are the only ones that I've been, that I'm moving forward with at this point in time, other than the building inspector, because that position itself will hold back Pulte and those homes getting newly constructed in the Anthem area. Those are the only ones that have not frozen.
Are we having a problem with covering that right now?
As far as the inspection?
The building or dispatch or whatever?
Yes, sir, we are. The police department is undermanned at this point in time, and it'll cost the town additional money doing overtime or other messes, methods to go ahead and maintain that service.
Okay, what about the, you're talking about a building inspector. Then we've got, I know we've got one right now, how many do we have?
Two overall, that's it, and one is vacant. We only have one hired, and one is vacant.
We've got two, and we've been operating with two for quite a few years, haven't we?
No, sir, I'm sorry. We have two authorized by council, but we only have one person hired at this point in time. And we have been staffing that with a contract company, which costs us twice as much money than a normal person would cost us.
Okay, well, we took one away and put him over building maintenance, checking the buildings, the buildings that the town owns, is that right? You know, he goes around and looks at them and says, you know, "This needs to be done, it needs to be painted, or it needs a light bulb change," or whatever, is that not right? We took one of our inspectors and put him in that position, couldn't we take him, put him back as an inspector? I mean, I would think each department head in each building could look around the building and say, "Hey, this is what we need to do." I think that's kind of a fringe position that I don't really think is crucial at this point. I'm sure there's a lot of positions we can look at, you know, but it sounds to me like, you know, whatever you guys think is, is the most important, you're going to go ahead and do, you know.
Councilmember Hawkins, Mayor Council, by me. That individual position, and I'm trying careful not to talk about individuals and positions on the floor, however, that individual applied...
Why can't we talk about them? We're talking about the budget here, right? What's, what's improper about talking about any particular position?
Because that falls under the personal rules and regulations, we can't not discuss people, we can discuss positions.
That's what I'm talking about, I didn't mention any names.
That, that, Councilmember Hawkins, that position was available in public works as a facility maintenance supervisor, and the position that was vacated was a building inspector. That was the choice by the individual, it was not a choice made by myself, or it was a decision that he applied for a position.
Yeah, whatever excuses, it's, okay.
A lot of you weren't here in 1978, Will was back there, he knows what we were going through back there. Vicki was around when we came into it in the expenditure limitations. Anybody that suggests cutting fire, police, I'd walk out the door right now, because they don't care about the safety of the citizens of Florence. In 1980, when I came on board as chief of police, I had a budget of $90,000 a year to run a full 24-hour police department. $90,000, that was to pay the employees to run it. We didn't have the prisons annexed into the town at that time, that's why you're low on that 3,000 population on your base. The prisons hadn't been, we didn't start annexing them until 1980. That's when our population went up. That's when the town's revenue started gaining. That's when the town's... That's when the town started coming forward out of the dark ages, was those annexations brought in the extra money, that we didn't have to raise people's taxes in order to get what the people expect and want out of Florence. When we lost this election, it hurt. It hurt all of our capital projects, everything we've got. And when we talk about capital projects, folks, we're talking about your water, your wastewater, the lack of being able to improve on that. I don't want to see that. I don't want to see additional monies that we have taken and taken out of the general fund and put it into our infrastructure projects, our roads. We've got some good roads in Florence. Some people think we don't. I can tell you what, go around to some of the other municipalities in this county and check our roads. And we've done that by being stringent with our money. We've always budgeted accordingly to what we're looking at. We're trying to improve the quality of life for all the citizens of Florence. This election defeat hurts, and you've got to remember in the elections, it's up to the council to get out and promote it. Staff can't do that. Staff cannot do that. They can go and educate, but they can't go and ask you, or your neighbor, or your organization to vote for it. The only ones that can do that is the organization itself or members of the council. The staff cannot. That's why I took a lot of responsibility for this failing and us being in the position we are right now, because I didn't put the time into it I needed to and I should have. I suggest the May 3 election is a way to get around it. And the reason I say this is because I don't want to see us go backwards by freezing positions that are needed, by cutting back on projects that will put Florence going forward. We started with this recreation facility over here, and I'm catching a lot of heat on that. But I can tell you what, the majority of people I've talked to are all for it. They don't care about what happened 20 years ago or anything. They want to know what's going to happen now. They want to know what our kids' future in Florence, Arizona is going to be. That library, the recreation facility, the aquatic center, the park, the soccer fields, the tennis courts, take a look at Pulte. How do you think Pulte sells their stuff? By putting in a golf course? Not anymore. Golf courses are on the way out. If you take a look at the, all the information I've been reading, it's recreation. People want a place to recreate, and we're going to provide that. And we're going to provide a nice place that will bring additional people to this community. Right now, we're faced with the annexation. It's something the council will discuss with our legal attorney in executive session later tonight. I can give you my opinion on that, and it's just my opinion, not the council's, it's Tom Rankin's opinion. Six people took away the right to vote for 1,800 people. Is that right, or is it wrong? Under our constitution, it's right, and there's nothing we can do about it. We can ask a judge to overturn it, but when you do that, you're talking about state law and you're talking about federal law. This expenditure limitation, if you take a look at it and you want to see something happen in Florence, Arizona, don't help us on the May 3 election. I'm going to, I'm going to, I've already talked to the vice mayor, who is not running at this time. Tom's going to be leading a committee to push for the May 3 election, so that we can bring back the monies that we need to provide the services that people want for our community. But when it comes to cutting police and fire protection, I will stand on the biggest, I'll stand on Top F Mountain naked and scream, "No." You that have been victims of crime should be standing right up there with me. You don't have to take clothes off, because you can stand right up there with me and say no to anybody that wants to cut fire and police. Our planning department, who has done a heck of a job for us, and we have, when we went through the growth span back in the 2005, 2006, Florence did not expand the planning department like a lot of the places did. Now, Becky, you know that as well as I do. We budgeted for the positions, but we didn't fill them. Other communities budgeted for the positions, filled them, and then had later people off. We've never rifted in Florence, thank God. Knock on wood, that we are smart enough not to have to do that. This council sits up here working with staff. We have a very qualified staff that's put these numbers together. Do I understand them all? I'm going to tell you, no. If anybody tells me they understand them all, other than Mike, maybe, I don't think so. It's a complicated situation we're facing. But for the future of Florence, we have to go forward, and we all have to go forward together. Our main street is looking something good. Do we want to stop? Do we want to go back? Well, Mom and Dad did it this way. Mom and Dad are gone, folks. We are the future. We're setting the future for our kids to grow up here. With that, I'm not going to say anymore, because I'm starting to get mad, that anybody that voted against the, and has no foresight into the future, folks, the future is farther than the end of your nose. Look into the future.
Tommy?
I just wanted to add, I don't think you can take the full burden of responsibility for not, for not having the home rule passed. I think that's kind of spread out quite a bit. There's some that project the impression that we don't have enough funding to cover this and have enough funding to operate, and we do, and we'll continue to receive the revenues through your, our citizens' tax dollars. The money's going to be coming in. The problem is, we just voted not to be able to use that money. That's it in a nutshell. I don't know how we can explain it any different than that. It's, it's the negative impression, I think, that was projected by some that is, that was the downfall for it.
All right. Tom?
The election we're proposing in May, the reason that I'm involved in this is because I believe in it, but also because I'm in my last six months of council. Therefore, I can at this time start an action committee to work on and work forward to passing this special election. I'm going to be looking for people in this town that want to help serve on this committee. That includes Anthem, Magic Ranch, all over, because we need to get this passed if we want to move forward. Mr. Rankin's correct. We don't want to step back. We've made the step forward, let's keep going.
Yeah, I don't think we're here tonight to debate, you know, what's happened. Tom says, "Well, we don't care what happened in the past." What's happened's happened. I think we're here tonight to find out where we stand at this time moving forward. So, I think staff, it would help to have the three options of redoing the budget and show us exactly what we can and can't do. Sitting here hashing over what's happened isn't changing anything. I'm sure, I'm for an election. I mean, I was for home rule passing, but I think everybody got spooked because we were moving forward, and I don't, you know, I know other people don't agree, but I think it was because we moved forward on that project without putting it before the people or including the people more on it. But anyway, all I'm saying is, I think we need the information on our options, because we can't totally rely on having an election and betting that it's going to pass. It could fail and we'd be right back here trying to figure out where we're at again. And another thing I want to make clear, I'm not talking about cutting any of the fire department or the police department. All I'm saying is, maybe we need to freeze, we don't know where we're at yet, you know. That's what I thought we were working on tonight. We waste half of it, giving, talking about what a great thing moving forward is. Well, we've got to figure out how we're going to move forward. I thought that's what we were here to do, see what our options are.
I think the options were pretty well explained. Folks, this time we're taking a 15-minute break. Tara, do you have one more question?
One more question.
Or not question, maybe comment.
When I was reading through it, the CFDs are not included in this expenditure limitation, correct?
That is correct.
So, would another possible solution to this, to be, create additional CFDs within our communities?
Councilmember Walters, mayor council, it takes voter action in order to do that, so that it definitely is a possibility. I do want to add that in talking to staff, we do need to sit down with council and have a work session on the CFDs as we move forward. As you all know, we have done certain bonding capacity in Anthem, primarily for new construction and those type of things, in the past that also has included maintenance. However, maintenance is included in the normal budget for the rest of the town, so that is something that we need to talk with council and see what your all direction will be in the future.
Okay. Because in prior precedences in other cities and towns has been, whereas you can bring a CFD into an older and existing community as well to help solve part of that problem. And secondly, as we're moving forward with talking about what is going to be cut from the budget and sharing ideas that way, I think it's really important that council is a part of that process, and we have work sessions, unlike what happened with the previous budget, where we want to be a part of that, we need to be a part of that.
Well, that's an interesting point, but the council makes the policies and the procedures, and the management of the policies and procedures is done by our staff. So, you can't really say, "We're here to be a part of it." You can be here and listen and offer suggestions, but you can't make a decision. None of us can.
We've always had a council member, up until, I don't know that we did this past budget, but we've always had a council member on the budget committee with staff.
As, yeah, to sit in, but they don't help make all the decisions in it.
They don't make the decision, but it's a group.
I had a question for Lisa. If we run the election in May, what's the cost going to be?
No. Budget probably would be cost about $8,000, because we would be running it independently. It could be anywhere from $8,000 to $10,000, depending on the number of registered voters at that time.
Are we looking at a mail-in ballot?
I would be looking at, to council to tell me how they would like to do it. It's a publicity pamphlet that is required to be mailed to all voters. So, the variation in the cost would be the mailing of the publicity pamphlet. And then if council so chose to do an all-mail ballot election, we would request that from the county.
And Lisa, that money can be donated to the town for that purpose, correct?
Excuse me, sir?
That money can be donated to the town for that purpose, is that correct?
I would have to check with the town attorney. I've never heard of money being donated to the town to conduct an election. That would be something that would be new to me.
I think, maybe not the election, but the publicity pamphlet.
Publicity pamphlet is a requirement of the state law in conducting an election on a proposition that is being placed before the voters, the same as, same type of publicity pamphlet that we did for the alternative expenditure limitation. That's required.
Okay, thank you. This time, folks, we're going to be recessed until 6 o'clock, at which time the regular meeting will start. Call the meeting back to order. Would you all rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Tara?
Would you please bow your heads as I pray? Lord, I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those that live and work in around our beloved city of Florence. In your most blessed name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is the first call to the public for comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff review of matter raised, or may ask them actively put on a future agenda. However, members of the council should not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion in legal action. We have sign-up sheets in the back. I have two. Lisa, do you have any more?
I do not, sir.
And the first one would be Jerry Raybert.
Hello, my name is Jerry Raybert. I live at 220 East Ruggles. I have written a little statement I would like to read to the council. I will also provide a copy of it to the secretary. I titled this "A Word of Caution." I believe someone needs to remind the council their proposed library and recreation center are going to be built in the floodplain of the Gila River. Governments along the Salt River in Phoenix and Mesa thought they were prepared for the kind of rain and flooding recently experienced. Much to the homeowner's surprise, they were not. I heard this was a 100-year flood. How many of you can remember within the last 30 years when the Gila River flooded, filling its banks to a level just below the bridge, and water came near to the houses on First Street? What year of flood was that? We all know, or should know, Coolidge Dam is unstable. If enough water fills San Carlos Lake, the dam could be breached. I've been reading a book about the flooding in Great Salt Lake in 1986, all the costs and efforts to mitigate the effects. Terry Tempest Williams said, and I quote, "Politicians don't understand the land, the water, the air. All have minds of their own." These are words we should try to remember in the view of our changing world and climate. Please reconsider the location of the library to a place where it can be protected from geologic disaster and be more beneficial to our town south of the Gila River. If you insist in your plan, please be sure you have good flood insurance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Despite the town's efforts, bulk trash has been accumulating all over town during the summer months. Autumn is here. Now is the time to make a clean sweep of the town, to get rid of all the existing bulk trash on the town's right-of-way. The less there is, the less there will be. It's a well-known fact. If bulk trash is not allowed to exist on the right-of-way, people will know that the town's citizens want to live in a clean, neat town. People will know that their fellow citizens do not approve of putting bulk trash out on the right-of-way without following the new rules. The process of gaining compliance with the new bulk trash pickup system has been described by the assistant town manager as a slow process. Well, it's slow, all right, and apparently it's not effective enough. Sofas and piles of trash, sofas and piles of trash bags and mounds of plant debris exist on right-of-way all over town. On behalf of the citizens of Florence and in anticipation of this month's 24th annual celebration of Make a Difference Day, I am asking you, mayor and council, to direct the town manager to use his authority to assign staff to remove the existing piles of bulk trash all over town. He's done it before, and he can do it again. I'd like to express a sincere thank you in advance to you, mayor and council, and to the town manager for making a difference here in Florence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does any other member of the audience wish to speak? Hearing on a call, a close call to the public, Lisa?
Item seven, public hearings. Item A, public hearing on an application received from Gail Flynn Davis Bottle Shop, located at 231 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, for a transfer of a Type 9 liquor license and for council recommendations for approval or disapproval of said license. Mayor and members of council, the town clerk's office did receive an application, and we did post that said application for the required 20 days. As of today, no one has filed any complaints regarding the... As of today, no one has filed any complaints regarding the application. Staff is here to make a recommendation that council approve the application. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any question, Lisa?
Yep.
Yes, this is a transfer of, who is it being transferred to? I see Gail Lynn Davis, but, I mean, is it a new license or is it a transfer? Who's it being transferred to, from?
It's just a transfer of the license. If you look at Section 6 Individual Partners, it will say who it's being transferred to. Mr. Manon, go ahead.
Yes, Councilmember Hawkins, the license was the license that was in the possession of Mrs. Barron's, who was the previous owner of the bottle shop, and she's transferring it to Mrs. Davis.
She's transferring it to Davis?
Yes.
And is Davis going to open it up?
That I don't know.
The license that was Mrs. Barron's is included in the application packet, it's page three. That's the license in question that's going to be transferred.
Is this person?
Page three or page four, Lisa? Is it going to be transferred, I mean, I see it's on page four. It, is it, is it going to stay here? I mean, is it going to be down at the bottle stop or is it going out somewhere else in the county? That's what I'm wondering.
It is for the location in question, that is the bottle stop. When it's requested to be transferred, it's the same exact license that is in play at the bottle stop that's being transferred to another individual so that they can open and operate something out of there and have a liquor license. That liquor license would be underneath their name and the operation that's in play would be underneath the person's name that is requesting the transfer.
Okay, that's, I just wanted clarification on it. Okay, thank you.
This person, this license being transferred to?
Mm-hmm.
Now, are they leasing it? Are they buying it? What are they doing?
There is a statement included.
Lisa, let me answer that.
Okay.
The building and the license were returned back to the original owners on a foreclosure sale.
Right.
That's what it was.
But now they're giving it to somebody else?
No. Gail Davis, her and her mother owned the bottle stop and the drugstore, sold it to the Barron's. The Barron's lost it, they went back to the original owners, which is Gail Davis.
Comments that are on file with the clerk's office state to whom it may concern, we are in the process of a foreclosure. We recently got the property back. Now we would like to request an interim permit to begin operating the documents of the foreclosure on our file with your department, and the person who signed it was Gail Davis on August 21st, 2014.
Okay, they are planning on reopening the bottle stop?
Yes, sir.
Same, okay, okay. That's what I needed to know.
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. So Laura is the one that's current owner?
No, not anymore. The foreclosure sale's already gone.
Laura is the one that the liquor license is currently in their name. They are asking for a transfer of said liquor license to be in Gail Davis's name.
So the original people that owned it prior?
Yes.
Are going to reopen it?
That's correct.
They're transferring it back to the person that was running it?
That's correct.
That has the license, okay. Got you.
Any other question?
I make a motion to approve the public hearing.
Tim, do you have, do we need open public hearing?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. No more question from the council. This time I open a public hearing. Any member of the council have anything they'd like to talk about on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now we need a motion, Reuben?
Make a motion to approve the Type IX liquor license transfer to Gail Lynn Davis.
Second? We have a motion and second to approve the transfer, or recommend to the Department of Public Safety the transfer of the Type IX liquor license to Gail Lynn Davis. Any other discussion? Remember, we, all we're doing is making a recommendation. We're not, we don't have the authority to do it, but we can make the recommendation for it. Hearing no other comment, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item A, consent agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member of council or the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of a contract with BBAR Consulting Services to carry out the housing rehabilitation specialist services required under the Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program. Item B, adoption of Resolution Number 1482-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, ordering the abandonment of a portion of right-of-way within Florence, Arizona, generally described as situated in the southwest corner of Section 36 Township 4 South, Range 9 East of the Gila River Meridian, the east 19.5 feet of Pinal Street from 11th Street to 10th Street. Item C, ratification of the Chamber of Commerce's Special Event Liquor License to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for their October 2nd, 2014, monthly business mixer. Item D, authorization to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for the Pinal County Historical Society Museum's application for a Special Event Liquor License for a fundraiser to be held on November 6th, 2014, at the Pinal County Historical Society and Museum. Item E, proclamation to proclaim October 2014 as National Community Planning Month in the Town of Florence and highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation to make resilient communities. Item F, approval of accepting register of demands ending August 31st, 2014, in the amount of $2,948,339.48.
Does any member of the council?
That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? I'd like item A. Any other, any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written with the exception of item A.
Second? We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as written with the exception of item A. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor and members of council, at this time, Ernie Felice will direct council on item A.
Bill, is there?
I just have a question.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and?
It's pretty simple. How are we deciding who gets picked for these? Is it first come, first served? Or, I mean, who applied for them?
For the, yes, for the rehabilitation?
I've had several people around town ask me, you know, how are we deciding to do that? And I just want to know what, you know, for sure.
That's correct.
How we're doing it? It's first come, first served, basically?
Based on the date of the application, yes.
And upon the need, true needs, probably, huh?
Correct. It has to do with eligibility, you know, as we process through the applications, we take the dates and then we work through the application and as they qualify, then that's, those are the ones we start working on.
Okay.
Will these applications, the ones you're going to pick up, they're going to pick, will they come back to council?
No, they will not.
Who will make the final decision?
The, there's a set of guidelines. We have our, the Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Guidelines that you approved, and they will be based on those, the selection will be made by those guidelines as far as their eligibility. So they've, basically, you have already approved the guidelines that we're going to follow for eligibility of the applicants.
How many applications do we have at this time?
I believe about 14.
Okay. And they all meet the criteria?
We haven't processed through their criteria right now. We're just starting right, we're starting on that and we're going through all of the criteria that's involved.
Okay.
Ernie, if I'm right, this is the CDBG money?
It's CDBG and home funds.
And have we received a home fund grant yet?
We received the State Housing Fund grant, yes.
Okay, so that included with the CDBG is going to allow us to do more work on more homes?
Theoretically, yes, depending on how much work each home needs.
Right. And Rosa Bruce, who's going to be helping you make the selection, is that correct?
Well, she won't be helping with the selection. She'll be helping with the rehabilitation services, you know, getting the contract, helping line up contractors, inspecting the work that's being done, making sure that everything's being done according to guidelines set forth by Department of Housing.
And making recommendations to you on certain issues, though, I would assume.
That's correct.
And Rosa Bruce has an experience in this due to the fact she worked for the City of Coolidge and been through a lot of CDBG grants and things like that, is that correct?
Oh, that's correct. She came from City of Casa Grande, actually. She's been working for City of Coolidge as a consultant and now City of Eloy.
And she's well-versed in the?
Very well-versed.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 8A for the CDBG A grant.
Second? We have a motion and second to approve consent agenda item 8A. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Oh, here it is. Department reports, any member of the council have any questions, the department heads that are here tonight? Glad to see you could make it, Dan. Hearing none, we'll go to the second call to the public. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to comment on? And here comes Mr. Freeman, ex-Mayor, Wilbur Freeman.
My name is Wilbur Freeman, I live at 171 North Pinal Street. I want to personally thank the council this evening for approving item 7B of the agenda, the consent agenda. This helps to clear up an encroachment issue that's probably been in existence for over 100 years. And I didn't discover it until I had my property surveyed about five years ago. And when I decided I wanted to build a block fence and I couldn't build it until I got this easement issue cleared up, but the abandonment of a portion of the easement helps, it does it, it clears up the whole issue, so personal thanks from me.
You were encroaching on our property, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, for 100 years at $10 a day. Can we finally lean on his property?
Minus, minus all the work I've been doing taking care of the trees on your easement.
Ruth appreciates it, so do we, Wilbur.
Okay, thank you anyway. Appreciate it.
Any other member of the public? Hearing none, I'll call a closed public call to the council. Tommy?
That be the stuff?
No. Tara?
Of course.
That's it, thank you.
I want to say thank you, Mr. Felice. I know how much hard work and effort goes into writing grants and especially, I remember there was a woman who came and spoke to council a while ago where she, her furnace had gone, she was living in a home without heat, and just knowing that it helps our residents and it makes a difference in the community, so we really appreciate the effort that you put forth in going through the applications. And I also would like to have a follow-up to Ruth Harrison in regard to the right-of-way and the blockage and the trash, if there's anything that we can do to get that cleared up. Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to pass along to Public Works that we've gotten a lot of, a lot of comments and all positive so far on the upgrade on the crosswalks on Main Street. It's amazing, this week I've had a lot, well, last week I should say, I've had a lot of people come up and say, man, those really look good, like we just did it. I mean, before, you know, didn't hear that much about it, but I've heard a lot of, a lot of good things about it, so I just wanted to let Public Works know that it looks good.
Tom?
Yeah, while I'm still on council, first of all, I know what Wilbur went through because if you have a home or anything in the old historic district, probably been about 15 different surveys done and they're all different. And so it's good to get it straightened out, Wilbur, I know how you feel. But one thing that's been going on for a long time, ever since RAD took over our garbage collection, which I have nothing against them, what they've been doing, but we're getting an awful lot of complaints about, of course, trash piles all around, about having to do what they have to do with the trash for the bulk pickup. And I don't know, personally, I would say we need to look at it in a fashion because we educated this town on how we picked up trash. This is an entirely different program. I know it's hard to get people to change, but why don't we look at RAD and say, wait a minute, RAD, you're picking up once a month on bulk trash, that's fine, but you're going to have to pick it up the way we used to pick it up. You should have a grinder, you should have a truck to pick it up. The second point is if they can't do that, then we should look at us going back to our own pickup with our own grinder and stuff which we have and charging RAD the difference in there, taking that away from their account. Because we need to look at this, if you, if you talk to people around this town, they're really not happy with that bulk trash pickup.
Mayor, can I, can I comment on that?
Go ahead, Tom.
I, I think we have discussed that in several meetings with, when we're going to the, when we're discussing trash with RAD, and the issue that we had was that in order to do something like that, we basically had to create a facilities district because the services would not be the equal to the other citizens inside of the town. In the downtown old Florence area, maybe in a few areas in Florence Gardens, you have the ability to pick up trash in the alleys and things like that. The citizens of Anthem don't have that same ability, but they're being charged the same amount, so in order to offer that additional service, we would have to create some type of a facilities district in order to add the additional services.
Since we've looked at it before, Tom, I'm saying let's relook at it.
I'm not going to get into discussion on that because I was, I lost when we went to the vote on it. Tara, when you said the invocation tonight, it got me to thinking that, that one of the most important things that we need to do right now in everybody's prayers is think about it again, our servicemen and ladies that are being put in harm's way over in the Far East or in the Middle East or whatever you want to call it. This country is facing a hellacious problem over there and those men need, men and women need our prayers. I get a little hot sometimes when I make comments sitting in the mayor's position. Maybe I shouldn't. I love Florence and I try to do what's best for Florence. And if I make some people mad, I'm sorry. But I tell you the way it is, I won't lie to you. Don't plan on it. But, folks, we've got lots of things going ahead here in town, lots of things are going. I would like to say thank you to Florence High School, School District, and Napa Auto. Their parking lot looks great. It's the first time I can remember both of those being paved at the same time. I don't think Napa was ever was until this time. Wayne is going to give you some more water to take care of on Main Street, but you're going to have that problem. But if you haven't noticed it, they've done a heck of an improvement up there and really makes that portion of the town look a lot better. And I see that we're working on Butte now, on the west end of Butte. Are we paving down there now, Wayne? So Butte tying into Main Street, tying into Plant Road, tying into Adamsville, it's going to be a real nice road down there, and I'm glad to see that going on. And I agree with Ruth, as I drive around town, we have got dirtier, there's no doubt about it. I've told Charles two or three times, him and I have talked about it, he's in the process of taking care of some things for us. It's just a matter of, as Tommy said, is educating the people, and Tom said it. The people have got to buy into the program to make it successful. I still think it was wrong taking the trash out of the alleys and putting it on the streets, that's my opinion. But I think also that RAD can actually get the equipment to be able to pick up some of these bulk trash pickups that we do have. some of these bulk trash pickups that we do have. Some people, the elderly and, and they may not elderly, but that are handicapped in some way, they can't get out there and cut up their logs into three-foot lengths and bag all their trash and everything. They may, they need some help. We need to be able to address that for the citizens. So we need to keep that in consideration when we redirect the issue on the contract with RAD. And with that, I don't have anything else to say. We need a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.